Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance is a flag of the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is our June 23 meeting. George, would you call roll?
Here.
Here.
We have a short agenda today. What I'd like to do is look for approval of last month's minutes. I received a copy in the mail. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I just want to make one comment on the minutes.
Sir.
We had an issue of a misidentification of an individual related to the Hanby Farms last month's meeting. And since it was, is now on the public record from the last meeting, I just wanted to point out that there, as far as anybody knows, there wasn't 800 slaves kept at the Hanby Farm. It was a different individual as far as Middleton that we were discussing. Want to kind of throw that out there.
Okay. George White or Daniel asks for a point of order because I don't know where to go with that.
Yeah, when you make the motion, then you could add that to, you know, a point of order on the motion to approve the minutes. And then you would vote on that, whether it should be additional or, you know, part of the minutes.
Or restate point of order.
Do I put a motion forward to add that into the next minutes?
Well, first of all, you've got to request for motion on the minutes. So when that is made. And second, before it's voted on, you could bring that up.
I'll make the move. Make the motion to approve that. Aye.
And if we could just note the fact that we had a bit of a mistaken identity from last month's meeting and that the Mr. Middleton that we're talking about regarding the Hanby Farms was not the Mr. Middleton that was brought up at last week's meeting. So as far as anybody knows, there wasn't 800 slaves kept at the Hanby Farms.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if you could reopen the motion before it's approved, you could add that to the, to the motion. So you just need to ask to reopen the motion to add the comments.
I understand it. All right. I now would like to reopen the motion to add the comments that were just submitted by Mr. Lewis to the motion.
Okay, motion to approve that.
A favor.
Aye. Aye.
Minutes have been approved with the additional acknowledgement. Thank you for your assistance, Steve. All right, now we're going to have a virtual presentation on 659 Chester Highway. Little background of this, this is going to be a state acknowledgement and a heads up on a plan that was recently submitted to the township. We're going to hear about possibly relocating McDonald's, which is currently on Chester Avenue, Conchester Highway and Chelsea Road across the street to where the old Taco Bell was located. With that, if whoever's representing 659 Chester Avenue, if you're online, please enter, state your name and begin the presentation. Hopefully we can bring that right up.
Great. Good evening, members of the board. Hopefully you can hear me. This is Michael Jitner with Bowler Engineering on behalf of McDonald's.
Yes, we can. You're welcome.
Thank you. I also have with me Eileen Seeburger, who is a area construction manager for McDonald's as well. And unfortunately, I don't have the view shed of the exhibits that were submitted. So I'll just, there you go. Thank you. Great. So obviously this being the just initial presentation, obviously this is a land development application on behalf of McDonald's USA LLC. For those obviously very familiar with the current location of the McDonald's, which is located on the eastern side of 322. That is obviously the existing McDonald's location. As part of the extensive Route 322 and surrounding roadway network roadway improvements that are anticipated by, by PennDOT. The access to the current existing McDonald's on the east side of 322 will be drastically impacted by the access configuration for both eastbound and significantly for westbound traffic. And as such, McDonald's is obviously very concerned with that from the standpoint of operating a viable business. So in the interest of that and the timing of the PennDOT improvements, McDonald's is looking to relocate to the opposite side of 322 in the current location of the existing Taco Bell within the shopping center. The access to and from the shopping center will not be, will not be altered in any way. And when we present the site plan, you'll see that we will be taking the Taco Bell, which is approximately 2,100 square feet in the area and proposing a new McDonald's restaurant that will really rotate the building 90 degrees and run parallel to Route 322. And if we can, if we have access to the site plan or the overall site plan, that may give you a better representation of what, what is being proposed. That plan is great. Thank you very much. As noted, the Taco Bell will be demolished to make way for a proposed new McDonald's building, which will be approximately 4,000 square feet in area. So we're a little bit less than 2,000 square feet of additional building area, but well within your ordinance requirement for the overall shopping center and the building coverage. The access to and from the shopping center will not be impacted. We'll be utilizing the right in, right out as well as the the access way at the signal at Chelsea Parkway within that area. What will be altered will be in order to rotate the building to improve stacking and circulation on the site. Some parking will be displaced as part of this proposal and we will be before the zoning hearing board in the form of a parking variance that will be before the board. The overall shopping center today requires approximately 960 parking spaces. The proposed application and the proposed McDonald's will result in the need for 990 parking spaces. As a result of the relocation of the reorientation of the building and creation, creation of some new green area within the shopping center. The resultant total parking for the shopping center would be approximately 901 parking spaces. So it appears that we have about an 89 parking space variance on the overall 900 parking spaces that's on the shopping center. So we will be before the zoning hearing board for that. We are very confident that the current shopping center is well over parked. And therefore we feel very confident that the variance application for the zoning hearing board will be found to be sufficient for the remainder of the shopping center and therefore the, also the parking for the McDonald's itself. If we can go to the actual site plan, which is actually a more of a closer view of the proposal. I'll be able to describe briefly the McDonald's operation. So as I noted earlier, the access to and from the shopping center off of 322 will not change as you come into the shopping center itself. You will make a left into now this relocated accessway. And then you will make an immediate left into the McDonald's portion of the shopping center. The McDonald's is oriented again, parallel with Route 322 with the front of the building facing the main access point. The main access drive to the shopping center. We are proposing a side-by-side drive-through configuration or a two-lane drive-through in order to meet the demand of really the drive-through need of their customers. And that's not just obviously unique to McDonald's. You probably see that at many of the fast food operations in the area. That will entail obviously the proposed improvements that are noted. And then we'll have again perimeter parking, ADA parking, and then the trash enclosure location. So this is the curb line that's running parallel with Route 322 and existing condition is not being altered. So we're not moving the parking any closer to 322. We'll keep that curb line consistent with the current configuration. And we will be adding some new landscape islands to make way for the relocated internal ring road within the shopping center itself. Overall, I noted that we'll have a slight increase in the overall square footage of the building coverage, but well within the ordinance requirement. And then we will also have an overall reduction of impervious coverage by about 300, 400 square feet. So additional green area overall with some of the new islands. And then you'll see the really significant landscape islands that are separating really the main parking area of the shopping center with the McDonald's itself. The only other plan I wanted to present to you would really be the prototypical building elevation. So you can generally see that the new architectural look of the McDonald's. Again, for those that may have seen this at other locations. This is the new look of the McDonald's, a new really architectural look. As you can see, it's modern in materials. And then moreover, the color scheme, very different than your, what I'll call the prior McDonald's look, which was the red mansard roof. So really this is kind of a flat roof look, very modern looking. And then moreover, more earth toned colors. This has been well received in many municipalities within the Delaware Valley and consistent with the general look. To give you an indication of where, what building side will face, what side of the street, the bottom elevation of this, you see the front with the McDonald's M and the McDonald's script sign that's facing the internal access off of 322. And then that drive-through side or the left-hand portion of that bottom elevation, that is the side that will be facing 322. And corresponding elevation at the top of the, of this exhibit, that side exhibit of the nine drive-through, as we've referred to it, elevation that will be facing in, internal to the shopping center itself. So I'll stop there. See if there's any questions we can ask. Obviously we've submitted land development plans. We're waiting review letters. This tonight was really just a, an informal presentation of, of the general configuration. This application in my estimation is very straightforward outside of the variances that we need to acquire for the parking and some minor signage variances. But we, we feel we're improving the condition of the shopping center with some additional landscaping and obviously providing a more modern looking building. McDonald's is very anxious to stay within the municipality given the, the anticipated driveway or roadway improvements on 322. So this is really their way of wanting to stay and be in business within, you know, within the township. So we'll, we'll stop there and, and see if we can answer any questions.
Did you leave yourself sufficient room for the 322 construction? Because it seems like you're pretty close to the road and I don't know how much off the top of my head the state's going to take.
Yes, so we, we have extensively reviewed the PennDOT roadway improvements. We've looked at that. There are some temporary construction easements that are going to cross over the current curb line. But in regards to the future roadway improvements, there's extensive right-of-way between the edge of Route 322 and where the current curb line is today, where the Taco Bell is. So we're not changing that curb line and we have, we have reviewed the PennDOT plans. And what we are technically proposing will fall within the, within the roadway improvements.
On the bottom left hand of the print near where the dumpster area is, will that be curbed right there just along the bottom? So what I'm saying is, will there only be one entrance into the facility and the rest will be curved all the way around it or?
The downed dumpster area, that, that area does open for a two-way drive aisle that, that would connect to the internal ring road of the shopping center. So that area is an access to and from the McDonald's pad site. And then that main access to the, what I'll call the top right-hand corner of the, of the McDonald's pad. Those are the only two main access points to and from the McDonald's pad.
Want to talk about parking spots. You know how many spots are in the current lot on the other side of the Conchester?
The, the existing McDonald's?
Existing, yes.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but if I had to venture a guess within that side, I would probably say we're, we're probably around 40 parking spaces.
And how does that compare to the parking that will be around the perimeter of the new building?
Sure, the, the new building parking requirement or new building parking configuration, I believe we are somewhere between 40 and 45 spaces within, within the, I'll call the McDonald's lease area.
So there's no loss in spaces moving to the new location and parking around the building?
Generally, no. And I say that from the standpoint of what McDonald's is experiencing today with, when they improve their drive-through configuration to this side-by-side. Obviously, well, not obviously, but just, just telling you that most of the McDonald's operations within the Delaware Valley are operating between 80 and 85% of the drive-through. We anticipate that this site will be in that same general ballpark and as such. And as such, the drive-through becomes a key component of their business. So that's important because we maximize that on the plan, as I noted earlier. And then when we talk about the need for parking, really the need for an extensive amount of parking for the McDonald's when they have upgraded their drive-through is not as significant. So with all that said, we feel that the parking around the McDonald's is sufficient for their anticipated operation.
Thanks for that. That leads me to my next question that has to do with the drive-through. Currently in the Taco Bell, the drive-through is curved on both sides and it becomes very narrow. It curves around the building. It's difficult to navigate. Will the two drive-through lanes in the new McDonald's be open? Or will they be curved on the internal lane?
The short answer is they will not be curved. The only location where there is curbing that really locks any lane in is really where the menu boards are located, where that internal island is placing the menu boards for the outside drive-through lane, if you will. The other lane designations that are on there, we made for the drive-through. It's in concrete. And then the surrounding bypass lane is in asphalt. But the only thing separating that is a paint line. There is no raised curb that's going to lock that in. When you come around the drive-through lane itself adjacent to the building, when the two lanes merge together in that location, again, we are just separated by a stripe for the drive-through lane and the bypass lane. So we're really not locking any cars in that whole stretch. And we provide that bypass lane throughout the entire drive-through experience.
Thank you. That's all I can.
I'm familiar with the type of McDonald's configuration that you're trying to propose here. And I note in some of the locations I've seen that there's actually a third lane which permits somebody to circle the facility rather than have to be queued in one of the lanes to break up to get passed. Is that proposed in this particular configuration?
Yes, if you refer back to the, I'll call the site plan that has the kind of more of the blown up area of the plan, as you enter the McDonald's pad from that top right-hand corner driveway, as you come into that lane, come into the site, you have the perimeter parking to the top. And then you have basically a 18-foot bypass lane and then two 10-foot drive-through lanes. So that bypass lane extends all the way around counterclockwise around the drive-through lane. So you have that in the event that you get into that area, you get into that driveway and there's cars in the drive-through and you just want to circulate the site to get to the parking that's on the perimeter of 322 or the parking that's in front of the building. So you have that bypass lane around basically all sides of the building.
All right, thank you.
Yep, we're not locked in in any location.
Now, this might be unrelated to the project, but since you're moving across the highway, does McDonald's have plans to at least demolish the current building after the move and make the property look nice? Or are they just going to leave the building up?
Yeah, Eileen, can I defer that to you if you have an answer to that?
I do know that McDonald's has a team, right, that will, I want to say dispose of the property, but that's not, I know that's not the right word. But they will debrand it. And then to be honest with you, I don't know whether or not McDonald's owns it or if we lease it. If we lease it, we'll return it to the landlord in accordance with the terms of the lease. And if we own it, then we'll look to sell it.
I think Alex, you have a question?
Amen.
Yes, I had a couple of questions. The, I just wanted to get a clarification on the previous question about the 322 improvements. So the existing curb line that is on your side of the street and the right-of-way line, are they being shifted with the 322 improvement or are they staying exactly where they're at?
We're currently not providing any additional right-of-way. We're maintaining the right-of-way line along the 322 frontage.
But is PennDOT requiring additional right-of-way when they do their project is what I'm asking?
That's something that I think we're trying to get the latest plan from PennDOT on to see if anything has changed. I know there's been discussions on having a temporary construction easement within that area. But I believe that's something that we can reconfirm.
Okay, and so you're going to verify if PennDOT's taking any additional right-of-way on the 322 project? And then how about the existing curb line that is not being relocated or shifted at all?
Correct. We're maintaining that same curb line along that entire.
I'm not saying you maintain, I'm saying PennDOT. PennDOT's going to maintain that exact curb line when they're finished the 322 project?
That's my understanding, but again, we'll secure the latest PennDOT plans to confirm that that is the case. But that is our understanding at this stage.
Okay, second question. Is there going to be a loading zone and the delivery times?
Sure, I think we can, obviously, we've provided the delivery truck path within the land development plans. The McDonald's delivery is a little bit different than a, what I'll call a standard loading and unloading operation in that they deliver via palletized delivery, which means the truck really can unload it really any spot within the site itself. And then wheel their product really into what I'll call the back left-hand corner of the building where the two loading doors are located. So McDonald's doesn't have a designated loading area because that truck can be flexible in regards to where it's located. We will, on any future submissions, kind of give a designation of where generally that truck may be located during delivery times. But we've also provided within the land development plans really where that truck path occurs throughout the site itself. And then delivery times, I'll try to answer this, Eileen, jump in if I misspeak at all. McDonald's has their own distribution company. So as such, they can, quite honestly, I can say this sort of straight face. They have more control over their delivery times. McDonald's, as you probably are aware, has a morning, a midday and an afternoon, you know, evening peak time. So they have breakfast, lunch and dinner. Really, the goal is to have this, the delivery that could occur two, three times a week, depending on demand. With the palletized delivery, it's occurring, the unloading operation is occurring about 15 to 20 minutes total time. And the goal is to have that truck delivering during off-peak times. So when I say off-peak, really between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. That's the goal is to have that truck show up on-site to make that delivery again, two to three times a day, 33 times, two to three times a week. And then 15 to 20 minutes of total time for the truck to be on-site.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We look forward to speaking with you, subsequent meetings. Good luck with your zoning variance requests and we'll talk to you later.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an update of our Heart and Soul. And I'll refer to Joe Shaw.
So Heart and Soul had a presentation by the Pennsylvania Humanities Association, providing supplemental Phase 4 training. And they held a discussion regarding the future structure of Heart and Soul and as it considers to the legacy options.
George, I know over the weekend, we had a Juneteenth celebration in Lynwood Heights. Would you like to make any mention of that? And I believe Heart and Soul also participated in that.
Yeah, we could start other without my update with that. So the last week, Upper Chichester Township, including HRG, who is the engineer doing the, the firm doing the open space parks and rec plan, Katania Engineering Township Engineer, Brian Sedell Township Planner, Alf Federico Traffic Engineer, and about 12 planners from Delaware County Planning Department did a high-intensity, one-week planning session for Twin Oaks and have developed a Twin Oaks Preservation and Enhancement Plan. It started out using the value statements from Heart and Soul as our foundation for the plan. We developed a community survey that was sent out to all the residents of the community soliciting feedback on various high-level questions about their community. We did this planning process and at the Juneteenth event on Friday afternoon, this was presented with the help of some of the members of Heart and Soul to the community, as well as there was a board for community members to vote on various different design standards, things that were coming up through the planners to say, you know, do they prefer option A, option B, neither option or both option? So that we could collect some information back. That information now has been collected and we're going to get to work on developing the actual plan, which will come in front of the Planning Commission for review either next month or the month after, probably most likely August, just because next month is going to be pretty jam-packed. So that is kind of just a way we're trying to do these new planning charrette-type events where instead of taking a year, kind of doing a long, drawn-out, high-level vision plan, it's more of like a highly concentrated, can we get done in 30 to 60 days? A actionable plan that addresses like needs in the community. So for instance, Twin Oaks' plan became an enhancement and preservation plan because as we got information from the community, there were some areas that they really wanted to enhance. And there were some things and features about the community that they wanted to preserve. And that kept being the theme throughout. So, you know, some of these neighborhood plans become revitalization plans and, you know, depending on what the kind of need is. So yeah, it went really well. We had a high level of interaction with the general public, getting information about it. I thought it was a great program. We used some of the foundations of Heart and Soul. We had a lot of different planners to kind of give a bunch of different feedbacks. So that was a, it was really, really good program.
Sounds great. And hopefully, we can do that in the future with other areas within the township. I think that will also assist us in getting some unique and different types of land development opportunities to review coming down the pike. So more proactive, you know, we are out there individually and collectively, the better the potential is for having the township look more like the model we'd like it to become. And hopefully, this will be a step in the right direction. Next item on the agenda is other, and I'll open this up to the floor here with the members here. I mean, start with Cindy. Have anything you'd like to discuss?
Nothing here.
Joseph?
Nothing for me.
Okay, and I presently have nothing else to add to the agenda. Next item is public comment. We have no visitors from the public in the audience today. So we'll pass through for motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Aye. Motion. Meeting adjourned.